Hi, everyone. I just wanted to say hello and welcome to the meeting. I'm Caitlin. I'm the Senior Clerk for the Conservation Commission. I'm just pretty much waiting for Kevin. So I was just going to give him a couple of minutes. He's been wearing a lot of hats lately. So if you could just be patient, I really appreciate it. Hi, everyone. I appreciate your patience. I just wanted to give you a heads up, let you know we're still waiting for Kevin. And if you could just wait a couple more minutes, I really appreciate your patience. Thank you.
Caitlin?
Yep.
All right, I'm here. Did you get my text? I'm sorry.
I did not. Welcome.
Oh, okay. Did you not get it at your phone? I tried to use my phone. It says that my service has been, there's a problem with my service. So I have to, of course, you can't call on the phone to call AT&amp;T because, anyway. So I'm here at Town Hall. So have we got a quorum here?
Ms. French is here, Mr. Sullivan, and Mr. Mello.
All right, very well then. Time being six-ten, Quorum being present, I will call the media of Freetown Conservation Commission to order. Let the minister select the members that are present. And again, I appreciate your patience, folks. A little misfire there. So that being said, we have a number of items that have asked for continuances. So when's our next meeting, Caitlin? We said two weeks, right?
Yep, February seven.
February seventh, okay. So the items that are looking for continuances are items number five, six, seven, eight, and nine. All due to some sort of peer review. And I will go over those items individually before I call them all to order. So item number five, this is an Anrad, so an abbreviated notice of resource area delineation for eighty-one Middleborough Road. Item number six is a notice of intent for sixty-seven Chase Road. This is for TJA Clean Energy. This is a solar plan. Item number seven, continued notice of intent for Off-Chip Way Road, East Freetown. This is again for just solar LLC. This is for a solar project. Number eight, we have another notice of intent, zero rear and five cost to drive, also asking for a continuance. That is a solar project that is still in peer review like the others. And I know number nine, we have a continuation of a notice of intent for forty-three Water Street. That was a request to construct and install a ninety-five-foot-long fixed dock with an associated gangway and to also eradicate some existing fragmities invasive species on the property. So those are all notices of intent and in public hearings. So I will call all those public hearings back to water. And we are going to continue all those to our next meeting, February seventh, six o'clock via Zoom. So I will entertain a motion to continue all the aforementioned public hearings to February seventh, six o'clock via Zoom.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Motion is made and supported. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Charlie Sullivan.
Aye.
Charlie Sullivan, aye. Keith Mello.
Aye.
Keith Mello, aye. Margaret French.
Aye.
Margaret French is aye, and Kevin Damaris, aye. Motion passes unanimous. Okay, Caitlin, were you able to get a chance or the ability, I should say, I know we were having problems with the website, to get the plans put on the website?
Not on the website yet, sir.
Okay, so we'll start with item number one. This is the public hearing notice of intent for fifteen Snuggles Way. And do we have the applicant here? This is, the applicant is Rick LaPlante, the owner is Rick LaPlante. Representative Christian Farland from Farland Corp., or it says maybe Steve is here. And the scope of work is proposed two-lot subdivision, and I will elaborate and associate, you know, they're constructing a roadway to create two lots. So that being said, I will call that public hearing to order. Do we have the applicant's representative here?
Yep. For the record, Stevie Cavalo of Farland Corp. on behalf of Rick LaPlante. Current property.
Yeah, Steve, thank you. So Caitlin, if we could, Steve, do you have the ability to do a screen share?
Yeah, I can share.
That'd be great. If you could do that, that'd be awesome. So Caitlin, can you just make sure he has the ability to do that?
All set.
Thank you. Okay, um, existing properties at the end of Snuggles Way, it's on the north side of Snuggles Way. It's currently just over five and a half acres with a single-family house. As you can see, there's a long gravel driveway to the single-family dwelling at the northeast corner of the property. The whole west side of the property contains bordering vegetative wetlands. What the applicant's looking to do is to construct essentially, give you this colored plane, try to zoom in. An eighteen-foot-wide gravel drive which connects to his existing driveway, and then another driveway which connects to this lot here. His intent is to create two residential lots. This lot here consists of one hundred and fifty-three thousand square feet with almost seventy thousand square feet of upland. He's going to remain with eighty-nine thousand plus square feet of land. There will be this paper street with a cul-de-sac which meets all of zoning requirements. The existing driveway will have a twenty-four-foot-wide apron that will be paved and then narrowed down to an eighteen-foot-wide gravel drive up until about this emergency turnaround area. And then accounted for a twelve-foot-wide gravel drive to both lots. Way we graded this driveway was we kind of pitched everything down and towards the left as it currently goes. Nothing will be going with the adjacent property on the east. What we did was we created this swell so that all of the stormwater runoff gets directed towards this grass swell and then this smaller pension basin which has an outlet control structure which then discharges to a twelve-inch-prepared pipe level spreader so as to not cause any erosion during discharge. During the storm events, we're able to reduce stormwater runoff both in rates and volume. That's essentially the extent of the project. We've already performed perp tests in this area here outside of the one-hundred-foot buffer and have obtained passing perks witnessed by the Board of Health. We're currently in the process of submitting to the planning board but have had some, I guess, communication issues just, you know, getting the public hearing date. Seems like the town's been pretty busy lately.
Steve, if you would just, I'll just briefly speak to that. We're going through a staff changeover. So we've been, the planning board's been essentially without staff for, I'll say at least a month and a half now. And so I do appreciate you and your client's patience. We understand and we're trying our best to facilitate. I'm hoping that you will hear from us in the next week or so relative to a public hearing date.
Yep, that's understandable. I appreciate you just letting me.
Sure.
Along the limit of work, we proposed straw wattle as erosion control measure. I mean, the increase is really just a change in this impervious area up front as far as increasing impervious area. We're widening the existing gravel drive, but it's not proposed to be paved. It's been existing as a gravel drive since Ms. LaPlante built the house and he has no intentions of paving that. I think that's the summary of the project, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions the commission may have.
All right, so the way this works is, again, this is a notice of intent, a public hearing. So we allow the applicant to make their presentation, and then we open it up to questions or comments. I will say that while it was a very thorough presentation, it did touch upon a number of items that are not within the Conservation Commission purview that would be more within the planning board purview. Typically with these type of projects, subdivision, we like to get out there, do an inspection if we can. I'm unsure if the planning board is going to send this for peer review, Steve. And I don't want to make any statements on their behalf either. I know it's only a two-lot subdivision being proposed. So I would ask just again for a little patience. We usually, when they're running concurrent like this, we usually don't close out one or the other until you're pretty close to finishing off on the planning board, right? But understanding the difficulties that we're having with the public hearing. At minimum, we'd like to get out there and do an inspection, just to take a look at the property, familiarize people with it. Take a look at the wetland delineation, and we can go from there. So with that, okay. You don't anticipate that that is going to be an issue now, do you?
No, I don't think that'll be an issue. The applicant and the owner, he's acceptable to that, amenable to that. He's got no problem. If he has to be present, we can make himself available. If he'd like somebody from our office to be present, we could make somebody available. He does have some German shepherds, quite a few.
Oh.
So we just ask that you, you know, give us a date and time so he can make sure that they're in their kennel.
Yeah, no, that's a very good point there, Steve. I will absolutely make sure that that happens. So we don't meet until the seventh. Is everybody available or around on the sixth of February? The Sunday prior to the meeting, if that's the case, then I would like to schedule it tentatively for, you know, say nine o'clock on the Sunday, ten o'clock on the Sunday?
I can do that.
Perfect.
Kevin, Charlie, I will not be able to attend.
Okay, is that just that day in general, Charlie? I'm not trying to pry, but if it's a time, then maybe we...
The whole month of February would be off the books.
Oh, okay. All right then.
All right.
All right then. Yeah, no, that's perfect. That's fine. And if members can't go at that same time, then we would just encourage them to try to go at some other point in time, but with the caveat that we must notify the landowner so that we don't incur the wrath of the German shepherds. So that being said, is there anybody here from the public that has a question? If you do, you can raise your hand on the Zoom or just politely say, excuse me, and I would just ask that you state your name for the record.
Hi, excuse me. This is, hi, this is Nicole and Derek Gracia. We're thirteen Snuggles Way, right next door to the plants. I'm not sure if this is a question for you guys, but that, the lot in the far back. I just want to make sure, like, we have lots of privacy, you know, between all the houses down here with all the trees and the retention pond. I just wanted to make sure that we would still have all that, that those trees would not be getting, excuse me, taken out on the pond or anything, around the retention pond.
Sure, sure. Kevin, if I could just respond?
Please, yes.
This green-hatched area here, we can't do anything within the wetland. There's no work to be done within the wetland. We're actually staying, you know, probably a good twenty-five feet away at the closest point from the wetland. This yellow line here is the one-hundred-foot buffer. So it's a distance of a hundred feet measured horizontally from this edge of the wetland. And you could see, I mean, you've got probably two hundred feet here of woods that will remain. It does get a little thinner here, but keep in mind that any work that's proposed within this one-hundred feet will have to be permitted again through the conservation by whoever decides to do that work. And again, at that point, you know, you'd be notified and have an opportunity to inquire and comment on any of the work that's proposed in this area here. So I think, you know, your buffer, that wooded area in between your property here and this property, you know, there's a good chance it's going to remain intact. Like I said, the only possibility is in the future, some work being done here, but I don't anticipate them going right up to the wetland at all.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask another question?
Sure, just state your name for the record, please.
This is Derek Gracia, thirteen Snuggles Way. Is, so it might understand, is this a shared driveway with the plants as it exists right now?
All right, Steve, and I'm just going to jump in, and I don't want to, Steve did a very good job with the presentation, but he spoke in a lot of definitives. This has yet to go to the planning board, so there may be some changes. But the plan is creating a road layout. So there will actually be a road that goes in. They'll have to get legal frontage, and on paper, there will be a driveway that comes off of that road. Aesthetically how it looks, I think, Steve, you spoke to that, and if you want to speak a little bit more on that, that's fine. But I will just caution again, we're starting to get outside the purview of the Conservation Commission. Our job is solely to be concerned with the wetland and the wetland impact and what the work has, impact has on the wetlands. And so while Steve is right, and please, Steve, if you want to just speak to the driveway, that's fine.
Yep, so it is proposed essentially, we're proposing a subdivision. So the creation of this roadway, what we're doing is asking for waivers on all of the construction standards so they're not paving it to the width that's required, twenty-four-foot-wide width, the entire length. We're not adding curbing, we're not adding sidewalks. We're just trying to keep it as low impact as possible, just as a means of getting, you know, a shared driveway is essentially all that will be constructed. And again, as part of the planning board process, you will be notified of that and any concerns relative to the subdivision and the roadway itself. You'd be able to address those concerns at the planning board meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah, and just again, it may aesthetically look like a shared driveway, but on paper, the layout will be a subdivision. There will be new legal frontage created for the lots, and they must access their lot through, the building portion of their lot, through their legal frontage in order to be eligible for a building permit. So at the end of the day, like I said, it may look like a shared driveway, but I just don't want anybody thinking that you can put in a shared driveway and get another lot. There needs to be a roadway layout, and there will be minimum standards applied by the planning board. But to Steve's point, the full construction is typically waived for subdivisions of four lots and less. And the state doesn't require stormwater management practices. We oftentimes will ask that some mitigation be provided for that on the planning board side. So, thank you. Does anybody else have any other questions? Okay, that being said, we're going to continue this till the seventh, all right, Steve?
Yeah, what time did you settle on the, what time is it?
So since Margaret, do you think nine o'clock is okay?
Nine would be better for me.
How's eight-thirty? Is that even better for you?
That's even better for me.
Wow. All right, so why don't we say eight-thirty?
Okay.
All right, and that's eight-thirty on the sixth, Steve. Will you reach out to your client, or are you going to ask that we do?
I'll reach out. I know he's present. He's going this...
Okay then.
Yep, so he's aware, but I'll make sure I send them an email just so there's documentation as well.
Okay, if there's any changes or if a Conservation Commissioner would like to go outside of that, we will certainly give proper notice to Mr. LaPlante on that.
Great.
Okay, if there's nothing else from anybody from the public or from the board, I will entertain a motion to continue the public hearing for fifteen Snuggles Way, propose two-lot subdivision and associated road construction to February seventh, six o'clock via Zoom.
I make that motion. I'll second it.
Excellent. Motion is made and supported. If there's no further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, roll call vote. Charlie Sullivan.
Aye.
Charlie Sullivan, aye. Keith Mello.
Aye.
Keith Mello, aye. Margaret French.
Aye.
Margaret French, aye. Kevin Damaris, aye. Motion passes unanimously. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, Steve, um I'll leave it up to you and your client. Uh we're basically gonna go over there and look at the wetland delineation and just overall topography for for conservation uh purposes. So uh if if there's a level of uh comfort that you don't need to be there in the home morning, that that's fine too. We will uh we will spend time with whoever's on site that day.
Okay, thank you.
All right, excellent, you're welcome. Have a good evening, folks.
You too.
Okay, item number item number two, we have a request for determination of applicability. This is for two Cameron's way. And uh unfortunately, the I um this one's not on the this one's not on the website either, is it? Caitlin?
No, Kevin, I'm sorry.
That's all right, I know we were having issues and and I'll follow up with administration tomorrow to see if we can get those things taken care of. Um so is the applicant here tonight?
Yes.
All right, well, I'm gonna ask and take a shot in the dark, but uh does the applicant have the ability to do a screen share?
Of the plans?
Yes, do you have the ability to do it, Caitlin? Can you do it?
Um I can try bringing it up, just uh it might be a couple minutes, move on.
Okay, because we're gonna need that for the next well, I don't know if Mr. Gottwald had can do a screen share. Let me see, is is Mr.? Okay.
Sorry.
I know that-
Give her a heads up.
Yeah, yeah, no, I appreciate that. It's it's for whatever reason, it's it's happened to quite a few of the pages on our website and I'll have to try and follow up tomorrow again. I thought that this would have been solved by now. Mr. Gottwald, do you have the ability to at least hold it up in front of your camera?
Um I can probably do that. It's taken me a minute to print it out, yeah, I'll do that.
Okay, why don't you do that?
I'll do that while you're working on the next one, yeah.
Yeah, that that would be good.
Do you want me to try and share my screen? I have the one, the plans that Caitlin sent us earlier.
Well, then, if you have that and you would like to do a screen share, boy, I'd be tickled pink, Margaret.
Okay.
Thank you.
Not a problem here, though. Is this what we want?
This would be for two two Cameron's way or yeah?
Yes.
Okay, so um-
I'm not sure what page you want on it.
Just the uh just the the newest plan set, I forget the date on it. Um December, I think, oh crap, I forget.
I have this one.
Is the applicant here?
Yes.
All right, well, um if you could help Margaret and let her know if that's the plan or not.
Yes, it is.
Perfect, outstanding, okay. So uh this was uh this is a situation like a lot of others where uh we had issued a notice of intent or excuse me, order of conditions on a notice of intent that was filed some time ago. Life has a way of getting in the way with things. Uh and unfortunately, within the time constraints of the permit, the uh the project was not completed or started, quite honestly. So the applicant came down, applied for a building permit, and then got to that point where it's get it was ready to get issued and they realized that uh they needed to renew their notice of intent filing. When I looked at the plans, there was a minor modification to the uh shape of the house. Septic system is staying the same, staying the same, and 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 I and and somebody correct me if I'm wrong. It looks it looks like everything is staying the same, it's just the shape of the house, no more incursion closer to wetlands and no wetland impact or anything. But this is just needed to get him his uh building permit. Um so does anybody uh have any questions from the board relative to this, right? We've decided we're gonna go with the a uh those facilitation control purposes, you're gonna use a nine inch straw water.
Correct.
Correct, okay. Um does anybody have any questions about this?
I'm good, Kevin.
All right. If there's no questions, and again, this is more of just of a paperwork shuffle, but uh I'll entertain a motion that we issue a negative determination, number three, that it will not dredge, alter, fill an area subject to protection of the act. So a notice of intent does not need to be filed with with the condition that all prior conditions involved with the order of conditions issued on the notice of intent are in effect uh and are in are enforceable through this uh determination of applicability. I'll entertain that motion.
Motion made.
I'll second it.
Motion made, supported. Thanks for the discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Roll call vote, Charlie Sullivan?
Aye.
Charlie Sullivan, aye. Keith Mello?
Aye.
Keith Mello, aye. Uh Margaret French?
Aye.
Margaret French, aye. Kevin Damaris, aye. Motion passes unanimously. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um next on our agenda, Mr. Gottwald, do you think you're ready or do you want us to uh go to Rick Sharon? Is Rick here tonight? Okay.
You can take care of him first.
All right, we uh is Rick Sharon here tonight? This is item number three, this is a request for determination of applicability for twenty-two Keen Road. Uh this is uh the owner is Nathan Delacce. And the representative, Rick Sharon, and the scope of work is in addition to existing accessory building. So is Rick here tonight?
Yes, I am, can you hear me?
Hi, hi, Rick, how are you?
Good evening, good evening, everyone.
Um so Rick, do you have the ability to do a screen share?
Well, I know we've- I've tried this before, it didn't work, but uh I haven't uh I have the PDF up on uh I can put it on my screen. But um what do you start here with by hitting the share screen button?
Caitlin, you, somebody's have to talk through this.
Can you walk me through this?
Yep, go ahead and hit the share screen.
Okay. All right, I gotta-
And if you have um whatever it is that you wanna show on your screen, you just use it like you regular use it.
Ah, okay, 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 so how do I, all right, if I could just find a way to get into, all right, his files. Okay.
You got this.
I wish I could say I do have it. Okay, let me try this. Sorry for the delay.
All right.
I think we're getting closer here. No, unfortunately, I've got the wrong plan.
About how my day was going today too, Rick.
Uh I wonder if I should let you take this other person while I try to dial this thing up, but I really can't do that, cuz then once I get out of the share screen, I can't find these things. Um anyway-
Rick, do you have a hard copy of the plan that you can hold up?
Let's try, let's try this, are you able to see that? No, you're not. Uh where is that? Would you would you like to um continue this? I'm gonna find that file and I'll just wait until you get back to me.
Okay.
I don't wanna tie these other folks up anymore.
That that that's quite all right. Let's get to, let's let's see if Mr. Mr. Gottwald is it can can. How are we doing, sir?
I don't have it yet.
And would you, Mr. Gottwald?
A- actually, all I see is uh Rick's screen right now, this desktop screen. So I can't figure, I'm I'm trying to get my daughter or somebody in here to do it for me, but uh-
Yeah, um Rick, so you have no ability to pull up your uh your your that PDF that's got the the or or whatever's got the plan, right? Cuz if you pull it up on your screen, it should it should share with everybody. If you've got the hard copy, get out a screen share and hold it up in front of your camera.
I got I got it on my screen right now, but you really can't see it. Uh well, all right. Does that make any sense, anybody?
Caitlin, can you see it?
Um second, I'm trying to figure this out.
I just got the camera.
Can anybody see?
Can you still see the my screen or Rick Sharon's screen?
Caitlin?
I can see it.
You can see his screen, right?
Yep.
All right, how do we how do we get him out of that? So we can at least hold the plans up in front of the camera?
I think we need to take a screen share off.
Yeah, I don't know how to do that, though.
Do you want me to do it?
Yeah, turn the screen share off so and and if Rick can hold it up in front of the camera, maybe he can do it.
All right, turn the screen that off. It stopped, okay? All right, how's that?
Can everybody see what he's talking about?
You'd have to be on my screen, unfortunately, I can see it on my screen.
Yeah. Ah. All right, um yeah.
You do you have copies of this plan in front of you? No, you don't have them.
I don't have a copy, I don't have a copy of my that these plans in front, no, no.
Uh give me more than, let me find out where this is in my files, because if I if I can find out my files, I'll try to go back to the screen share once again.
Okay, all right, Mr. Gottwald?
Can you see what I have?
Somebody answer him, please. Caitlin, can you see what he has?
Yes, we can see.
I can see that, but do you want me to share my screen again?
Margaret, if you can if you can share your screen on any of these plans, please do, thank you.
Um oh, can you can you make me live again, Caitlin? There we go.
Yeah, seven Seven Glad Street. For a septic septic upgrade.
There we go, can you see that?
Yes.
Perfect. All right. So Mr. Gottwald, please make your presentation bef- before things go sideways again.
Okay, sure, thank you. Okay, I, as you can see, Seven Glad Street, uh septic repair, right now, there's there's a tank and a leaching pit.
If you could just hold on a half a second, sorry, I'm sorry. Caitlin, these plans are upstairs on your desk, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'm I'm just, go ahead and make your presentation, guys, go ahead, continue. I'm just gonna run upstairs for a second.
Okay, hi, uh my name's Bill Gottwald. We did a a perk test here uh last month and uh it's all sand. The the sys- the original system was built in the mid-eighties, it was a septic tank and a leaching pit. We're gonna change everything with the new septic tank and a uh a leaching field with the uh plastic chambers. So if you can see from the plan, where it is now is really the only place it can go to meet all the setbacks. We have a butters well on one side that were just a hundred and one feet away. Then in the front yard, there is a uh the onsite well, we're a hundred and four feet away from that. And uh we kept a minimum of ten feet off the garage foundation. And that keeps the uh proposed field fifty-two feet at the closest to the uh vegetated wetland. It's close, it's still a little bit further than the old leaching pit, which was probably uh I don't have a a thing on there, probably about forty feet away. But it's a very well-defined edge of wetland there. And uh it we did flag it, and that's what you see here on the plan. So any questions, comments, suggestions, I'm open.
Yeah, I'm back, sorry.
That's all right.
Seven Glad Street, here we go. All right, did you make your presentation, sir?
I did, yes.
All right, perfect. And so it is pretty straightforward, this is a septic upgrade. And so the reason why we have to do this uh closer to the wetlands uh is because you're a setback to your well, is that correct?
A setback to to on the onsite well and the butters well.
And the next door neighbor's well, right? You're a hundred and one and a hundred and four feet away.
Right.
You'll need, okay, uh you'll need a variance from the from the border health.
Well, we need a variance, we're we're asking for a a five foot to water, yeah, so one foot uh water table separation so that they won't have to put in a uh pump.
And you are you're within the seventy-five feet I uh too. So anyway, I just typically how we condition these is uh if in fact you need to make any kind of changes relative to variance requests or out of concern with the border health permitting process, then uh we would just ask that you would provide us with the new plans.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
And that so that we would then e- enter them as the plan of record. Uh typically, we would also make a determination if there was a a major change that would require a whole new filing. But with an RDA in septic repairs, we don't, we don't typically do that, so. Um all right, does anybody have any questions? I see you have proposed solicitation control with a silt sock. Uh there's a pretty steep grade there, uh particularly uh on the- yeah, so so uh what are we what are we proposing for uh the silitation control, the silt sock, what what's the uh size?
Uh I just would put down like a a twelve inch uh silt sock and stake it in. I I don't know how well you can see it, but there is the the there is a a uh a uh a six foot uh privacy fence along there too, so I'm gonna put the silt sock right on the uh, you know, on the outside of the fence. And so between the two of them, o- over that time, it should um-
Yeah, and again, understanding, uh Bill, this is a temporary disturbance, right?
Yes.
Uh although it when it when it being-
I was gonna say, depending on the weather, of course, but other than that, you know, it's three or four days and 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 it should be done. And actually, they will leave the silt sock up after through the winter, because even though it's it may be somewhat graded, maybe some loan put down, you know, this there's gonna be nothing to hold it in place, so at least keep the silt sock in place.
Right, uh and so what we've off what we've also conditioned in the past is that that some on on these things would be that the silitation control must be maintained until adequate uh ground coverage uh is is accomplished, so.
Yeah, and one one other thing, uh I'll I'll be doing the installation too. And something else I've been putting down lately is uh you call it different things, but I call it a a straw blanket. It's an eight foot wide roll and it it lays over the ti- it does a pretty nice job of uh keeping everything in place.
Are you, Matt, yeah, yeah, I was gonna say that i- if if there's steeper areas, Bill, then then uh we we would ask that you use that, those steeper areas, to keep it, because you're not gonna get seed to grow until at least, you know.
No, not not at all.
April.
It it makes everything look nice and everything too, so.
Yeah, 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 all right. Uh does anybody have any questions or comments? Okay, if not, then I'll entertain a motion that we issue a negative determination, number three, that is it is a buffer zone to a resource area but will not dredge, alter, or fill said resource area uh with the condition that uh the silitation control be maintained until a good uh ground coverage is uh is achieved uh in the springtime. Uh and additionally conditioned that should there be any changes relative to the actual septic design, that we be given a uh copy of the most up-to-date plan for our records. I'll entertain that motion.
Removed. Second.
Motion made, supportive. Thanks for the discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Charlie Sullivan?
Aye.
Charlie Sullivan, aye. Keith Mello?
Aye.
Keith Mello, aye. Margaret French?
Aye.
Margaret French, aye. Kevin Damaris, aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Bill, I appreciate you muddling through this with us.
Oh, thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome, sir. Okay, uh, Margaret, do you have the ability to, to screen share the, uh, Mr. Sharon's deal, the, um, twenty-two Keene Road?
We never got anything for that. All we got was, um...
Okay.
I think I can try it.
This is Keene Road, right?
Yes.
Yeah, he says he's gonna give it a try.
Okay.
Give this one more shot here.
All right.
No, it's giving it to me here, damn it. I was trying to get there before and I couldn't.
I'm laughing with you, not at you.
Oh, it's all right.
Not at you, my friend.
Let me try this. I'm gonna go here.
And unfortunately, Rick, I'm the only one who's on the board from the time that you did the first, uh, this first plan.
Yeah.
I'm the only one who remembers it, 'cause I would just simply say they're putting a little bit of an addition on the building that they built when they, I think it was about ten years ago now.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay. And we are gonna be, I think we're getting closer here. Okay. Are you able to see this?
Yes.
I can.
Yes, yes, perfect. Yes. Let's do this, brother.
All right.
But for the record, Rick?
Yes. My name is Rick Sharon, Sharon Associates Engineers, here on behalf of, uh, Nathan Delacce at twenty-two Keene Road. Uh, the property, as you can see, Keene Road is off to the right over in here. He's got a driver that comes in. His house is up at the front of the property. Uh, this is coming as a solid line, but that's actually the buff, the hundred-foot buffer zone, this green line from a wetlands over here, and, uh, this is the northwest corner of his property. And a couple of years back, we came in when he was putting in this accessory building. Uh, you'll see down in here, it's a forty-by-fifty-foot, uh, existing accessory building. Uh, he's adding to that right now. Now, we came to you prior to this to get permission to pave this area, so this is already existing Batumish driveway. It comes down right to the edge of pavement over at this point. And, uh, we had also put in a stone trench to pick up all of the stormwater runoff coming off this, uh, Batumish driveway. I think originally we turned it in. We said that this edge of pavement would, was come around, up around the side of his existing building. Well, he never paved this portion, so now he wants to put a pole barn addition onto the side of his existing building. So, he wants to add a thirty-foot, uh, by forty-foot addition onto the existing building. Uh, there'd be no increase in pavement, um, actually, less pavement than what we had originally, but again, in terms of solid surface area, uh, runoff here would have been the same thing as the amount we were handling before, uh, with the pavement that had been proposed there. So, uh, basically, again, is that's all picked up in a stone trench along in here, and that's, uh, again, probably about sixty-five feet or so from the edge of the wetlands, uh, off in the woods, and this is all wooded area in between. So, that's, that's essentially what he's asking for, so, um, we felt...
If I'm seeing this correctly, Rick, um, it's only like five feet that the building is actually into the hundred-foot buffer?
Yeah, just this tiny bit over in here.
Yeah, so really, that's, uh, so we're not adding, we're not adding any more pavement, so we're not really that concerned about runoff. Uh, you're right, the previous area is, uh, was permitted. That was supposed to be paved. It's not, so that's not changing, and so, it's pretty straightforward. Um, I, septication control. Do we have anything?
We kind of felt this trench was gonna take care of us, um, if this, a, again, there's, there's not a foundation going in here. This is gonna be done with, uh, uh, with poles, okay?
Oh, that's right, it's a pole barn, yeah.
Pole building, so we're not digging anything up. Uh, I mean, aside from, um, you know, the, the small spot holes where they put the poles in, but as far as the foundation excavation, we're not gonna have that.
All right, so, um, I don't disagree. The infiltration will, should take care, and plus, you're ninety-five feet away from the wetlands.
Yes.
Uh, from the corner of the pole barn, so...
Corner here, yes.
Yeah, 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 and again, you said to reiterate, right, when that existing edge of pavement is staying the same, right? We're not paving anymore, so we wouldn't let the excavation...
That's right. All of this is already here.
All right. I would just say then, uh, but for a comfort level that we conditioned it that, uh, should site conditions require it, so, uh, additional septication control will be installed, um, on the site.
Fair enough.
Uh, does anybody else have any other questions? Oh, all right. No? Okay. Um, then, uh, I will entertain a motion again to issue a negative determination number three that's in resource, uh, excuse me, in a buffer zone to a resource area, but will not dredge, alter, or fill, uh, with the condition that, uh, septication control be utilized should, uh, site conditions, um, require it, but I don't think it will. So, I'll entertain that motion.
So, move.
I need a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion made, supported. There's no further discussion on the motion. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Roll call vote Charlie Sullivan?
Aye.
Charlie Sullivan, aye. Keith Mello?
Aye.
Keith Mello, aye. Margaret French?
Aye.
Margaret French, aye. Kevin DeMaris, aye. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, I should have said it earlier, but, um, just give us a little bit of time. Our clerk will come in in the next couple of days, get these things written up, and we'll, uh, I'll get them signed. Uh, just a point of, of, uh, that Margaret, we have, the board members, because of the fact that we are meeting by Zoom, the board members in instances where they have voted in the affirmative have given me the, uh, ability to sign for them, and I've, I've gotten that ability from them on the record. Uh, would you like, and, and totally up to you, would you like to, uh, give me that ability? Again, only on things where you voted and, uh, in the affirmative that would need to get signed, uh, on these permits, or would you rather come down and sign them yourself?
No, I give you my permission to sign.
Well, thank you very much. Um...
Do you need me to go and sign anything at town hall for that?
No, it's, no, as long as we've got it on the record. We're hoping, you know, when this happened, we were hoping it was only gonna last a, a few weeks, couple of months, maybe, and, well, here we are. Uh, so, uh, it just, it just makes things run a bit smoother, right? So, what we do is, I'll ask the, uh, the clerk, I'll make sure Caitlin, going forward, before I send anything off, let's send at least a copy of the, the RDAs or the NOIs or the decisions out to people and give them an opportunity to comment, and that way, if they want to, they can, they can do that. Uh, but I can rest assured that our permits are straightforward. Whatever the condition was, that's the only thing that's on there, so... Uh, and I think, Mr. Mellow, if, if, if you haven't done it in the past, um, why don't you, uh, just reiterate for me that I have the ability to do that, too?
Oh, you have the ability.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mellow. All right, that being said, uh, Caitlin, uh, is still working on the minutes. She'll have those minutes for the next meeting. Uh, we've all been fighting it. Staffs have been fighting it around here a little bit with the, the illnesses, so we've had some absences, so some of the things have just taken a little bit longer, but it's expected with what's been going on. Uh, that being said, does anybody else have anything to properly come before the, the Conservation Commission? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Uh, motion made, supported to adjourn. Uh, if there's any further discussion on the motion, hearing none. Um, all those in favor, roll call vote. Charlie Sullivan?
Aye.
Charlie Sullivan, aye. Keith Mello?
Aye.
Keith Mello, aye. Uh, Margaret French?
Aye.
Margaret French, aye. Kevin DeMaris, aye. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, we'll send out a, uh, reminder to everybody about the February sixth inspection. Uh, and if you can't go and you'd like to go on your own, just contact the office and Caitlin will reach out to the property owner, lest you get eaten by some German shepherds. All right, folks? You have a good night. Everybody be safe.
Nice.
You, too. Good night.
Good night.
Yeah, bye-bye. Bye-bye now.